I apologize to the audience for being a little tardy, but I'm gonna officially call this meeting of Skokie School District Seventy Three and a Half. School Board Open, today is September ninth, it is seven oh three, and um, I need a roll call.
Member Amawala?
Here.
President Nelson?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger? Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Here.
Member Jacobs? Member Chan?
Here.
Um, at this time, I would, I need somebody to um, read the land acknowledgement.
Do it. At Skokie School District Seventy Three and a Half, we respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands of the Ojibwe, Odoa, Potowami, Hochuk, Miami, Menomi, Sac and Fox Nations, and Kikapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories, and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership in life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of dispossession upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that being silent, we are complicit in the ongoing oppression of indigenous peoples, and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you. At this time, for all of those who are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we are moving on to public comments. Please proceed to the microphone. All public comments are capped at three minutes, and please make sure we do not call out anybody by name. You can refer to any person by their position within the district. At this time, moving on to item D, FOIA request.
The district was in receipt of one FOIA request. We got it on eight nineteen twenty twenty-five, and we responded at eight twenty-five twenty twenty-five. It's from Jacob Long. It was a commercial request about employees' names, titles, et cetera.
Thank you. Moving on to item E, Staff Recognition.
I can go ahead and get us started. First, I wanted to give a shout out to Dr. Kyle, America, and all of those whose idea it was to have our back-to-school bash at Middleton instead of McCracken this year. Uh, I feel like I heard at least ten people in a span of ten minutes say, why haven't we always done this? And I agree, I'm not sure why, but it was amazing. And then with that also, all of the teachers and staff that showed up, not only to have a very beautiful welcoming back to school for our students, coupled with the teachers that were volunteering, face painters to, the table next to it was the fees table, and I thought that was what everyone was in line for. They were in line for the face painting. And then finally, I know with the current climate of the world, there can be uncertainty of what spaces feel safe for our students, and I just appreciate all the teachers that make our students feel safe. Thank you.
I wanna echo what um, Bushra said, and also, I wanted to thank Ms. Kuiper, uh, the A-grade singers. We had eight students who made the honor choir, and you know, really working hard and always um, being appreciative of the arts as well as um, other learning.
Um, I'm gonna give a shout out to our band directors, uh, Mr. De Stefano and Mr. Mendoza. Um, so my kids started band this year, and I didn't realize how rigorous it was. Um, they get there at seven, my kids get there at seven in the morning, and they want to get up. I was like, you know, does this work for you? She's like, I like band. So, kudos to them for not only making it fun, but getting our kids there early, and you know, the awards speak for itself.
Okay, um, Bushra stole my thunder about the um, back-to-school bash, um, but I also do want to acknowledge just the smooth transition or the start to the school year. Um, just, I guess for me, no feedback sometimes means it's good feedback and that things are going pretty well for um, students and families. Um, and so, um, the teachers I know have, you know, rolled out a great school year. I know a lot of people are looking forward to McCracken Open House Night that's coming up on Thursday, and so I just wanna say kudos to everyone for uh, you know, a nice smooth start to the school year, and the kids seem happy going every day. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn um, to the pu- public hearing of the budget for um, school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, at this time, we are now in the session for the public hearing of the budget. Dr. Joe Bailey will be presenting the budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Quick point of order. Do we have a public comment before, after this discussion, afterwards? Okay, there's a public comment after the presentation. Later out, related to, I meant for the public hearing, I don't know if you're supposed to have one related to the public hearing. Does anyone know?
Anyone can speak during a public hearing.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Joe Bailey. Um, I am the interim business manager, and uh, we have been working very diligently over the last six weeks or so to develop this year's budget, taking a backward look as well as a forward look, uh, as to where our district is and where we are going. And I think you'll find this presentation, even though I'm giving it, somewhat interesting. Um, I would like to just start by saying, let me start with this. There we go. This, sorry. Operator error. This is actually the state budget form that the board members will be signing pending their approval of the budget tonight at the end of this meeting. Uh, the business office will then uh, take that form, finalize everything, and uh, upload it to the state by September thirtieth, which we have to do by law. Here's our, uh, there've been a lot of questions about where were we last year, how did we end up? Uh, there wa- wasn't a lot of information, but we were able to gather this, and this is from our Infinite Visions, our financial software. And you can see that we started the year with thirty-four million and one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, and we ended the year with thirty-four million and seven hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, which looks good because we actually ended with a surplus, right? Not so fast. I wanna just take a minute and explain to you how school funding works, so that you have a really much better idea of how this all goes. So, we have, in schools, we have many buckets. If you can imagine the bozo buckets, those are our funds. We have a bucket for education costs, which pay for teacher salaries and such. We have a bucket for operation and maintenance, which pays for our facilities and all the salaries related to that. We have a, another bucket that pays for our debt, that we can't touch, that's flow, that's flow-through money we never actually see, and it's taken care of by the county clerk. That's Fund Thirty, that's our bond and interest fund. We have a Fund Forty, which is transportation, that's all our busing. Our s- our uh, busing to field trips, our busing here, uh, some of the uh, rides, we have to give some special ed children as well to other districts. We have Fund Fifty, which is in fact our IMR, IMRF and Social Security Fund, another fund that we cannot touch. We, all we can do is put money into it. Then we have Fund Sixty. Now, this is really important, because Fund Sixty is not only not an operating fund, but it is designed to be spent in deficit. In other words, we, when we put money into it, it's usually because we've reauthorized bonds or sold a referendum or something like that relative to facilities. That money has to go into that Fund Sixty. We can't touch it for anything else. And this is important that you understand this, uh, because I'm gonna get back to this in a second. And then we have Seventy, Eighty, and Ninety. Seventy is our working cash. That's like our banking account. We can use that for anything at any time, pending a resolution by the board. And then Fund Eighty and Ninety are TORT, which takes care of our insurance liability and some of our attorney fees. And then finally, we have Fire Prevention and Safety, which is Fund Ninety. Now, because of the tax cap many years ago, um, where we were once able to fund all these buckets to the level that they were supposed to be funded, the tax cap has slowly drawn us back to where now, um, if we're lucky enough, or we manage well enough, we can fund these upper funds a little bit, but our primary uh, resources are going to uh, Fund Ten, Education, Fund Twenty, O and M, and Fund Thir- Forty, Transportation. If we have anything left, we like to put it in working cash, um, and we do have some fund balance in each of these. It's good to have fund balance in these because that's kinda like our uh, break glass in case of an emergency, and that, I mean, all the funds, we should have some kind of fund balance. Now, the reason the Fund Sixty is so important is because we authorized some bonds in May, about seven point five million dollars with bonds. We got the proceeds off that. That went into this all fund, this is a look at all our funds from beginning to end of last year. We put that seven and a half million dollars into our funds, and if you notice, while we finished with about six hundred grand more than we started with, you have to remember that we also took in that seven and a half million dollars, and because this is reflective of all our funds, it's not a true picture of our performance in our operating funds for last year, and we'll get to that. And I'll take questions at the end, if you have any. There we go. Okay, so this is the state budget summary sheet, you can see this on our website. This'll be one of the things that are, part of the package that'll be uploaded to the state. The reason I put this in here is because this is the actual budget for twenty, FY twenty-six this year. And I want you to notice, and it might be a little fuzzy, but it won't be if you look at it online. You can see all the red down here. If you look at the top line, those are our fund balances at the beginning of this year. If you look downward, you'll see what we've spent. And then if you look here, this should not be in the red. That's our deficit. And if you notice our operation funds, Education, nineteen, one point nine million, O and M, one million, and Transportation, about seven hundred thousand, in deficit. Very concerning, um, and there's, it's something that we're gonna have to address as a district, and the board and uh, Dr. uh, Dr. Kyle are working on that as we speak. And then finally, here's a look at the state budget form of our operating funds. Most important number, I think, is this number here, under total, and the red, that's three point five million dollars. That's our operational deficit. It's, it's what we call a structural deficit. It's not gonna go away unless we take proactive, uh, we have a proactive response to it. This is with all our funds, and we've done a uh, five-year look back and a five-year look forward. You can see, um, I am figuring this out. You can see right here in twenty-one, uh, we had quite a bit more money in our all funds. Now, that's relative to the CARES Act grant, ESER, for COVID. It's also relative to higher CPI, which is what our uh, taxes are based off of. So there's a lot of things that go into that higher number. I think a more realistic number would be probably the year prior, which I was not able to get, but I think it was about thirty-five million at that time. So, we're probably operating most effectively and efficiently when we have about thirty-five million dollars in our cash balance, starting cash balance, at the beginning of the year, based on historical perspective. And you can see us kinda bouncing, 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 but then when we get to here, which is this year, you can see where we're at with all funds, and that includes the seven point five million in our Fund Sixty, which we can't use for anything else. And then you can see what happens from that point forward if we do nothing. This blue line right here, that's our, uh, the board has a uh, policy that requires the board and the administration to stay, keep those fund balances at fifty percent or higher. What happens if we don't? Nothing, except we work to get it back up. And you can see, and historically, we've never dropped below that. However, uh, about mid-year of twenty-six, going into twenty-seven, it looks like our low point will drop below that. The red line is our low point. We get taxes twice a year. We're supposed to give them in August, this year we're not getting them until December, and we get them in March. And usually, that later payment in March, by the time we get to August, we've paid our summer pay, we've done our facilities, we've done all kinds of things, and that's usually our low point. So that's the red line, and that's not a problem because we obviously have enough money to carry us, even if we dip a little bit low, below the fifty percent this year. However, when you get out here, if we don't address the structural deficit, you can see that we're not really going to have much money left at all. That, as, as a retired superintendent, that would make me stay up at night. In fact, the year prior would make me stay up at night as well. Now we go to operating funds only, and this is where the rubber meets the road. You can see where we're at this year. We sa- started the year with about seventeen and a half million dollars. I'm thinking, based on our work on this, we're gonna finish the year at about fifteen five million dollars at our high point. However, our low point is going to drop this year to under twelve million dollars, which we've not been at in a long time. And you can see the progression as we go further down. And these are the funds that we have to really look at, and it's gonna, it's gonna take a lot of looking, a lot of thinking, a lot of courage on the part of the board and the administration, because there's some things that we're doing right now that a lot of other districts don't do, that might have sprung up during COVID when we had that extra money, but we've gotta scale back on. And that's gonna be a process over the next two to three years, if we wanna get healthy again, and we have to get healthy again, or else we're gonna be selling furniture at some point, and we don't wanna do that. Here's the impact of long-term debt or, and deficit. We face a structural deficit, and we can't solve it this year. First of all, we have a lot of contracts that we'd have to pay out anyway. Plus, we have to have a glide path to bring our community along with us as we get to this, and we have to spread the word about where we're at. And third, it's gonna take some hard decisions to make the adjustments necessary to get us healthy again. However, if we leave it unaddressed, our reserves will be gone, and our stability will be gone. And we will no longer have the choice of providing things in an emergency or at special times, uh, that we are currently providing, we won't even have that choice. So we have a chance here, looking down the road, to take proactive uh, action on this, and control our own destiny, or just batten down the hatches and ride the storm into the rocks, in my view. Now, I'm in interim, this board can let me go tonight, so I'm just giving you those facts as I see them. I hope you don't, though. This will limit our ability to staff, to program, and our flexibility in being innovative. And this district, as a former superintendent in the Little Nine, I will tell you, Seventy Three and a Half has always been viewed as being managed in a very professional and highly efficient way, and it has an awesome reputation out there. And that's another reason we don't wanna let this line to continue to decline. Here's the error page, just to prove that this is a legit budget. If you go on the website, you'll see this page, I think it's like page nine or something like that. It's way in the back, but basically, here, uh-oh. Oh, I was doing so well. All right, so here is the okay line. All those are okay, that means we've got everything in order as far as its state goes relative to our fund balances, and making sure we're, we're approving tonight a balanced budget for this year. However, we're balancing the budget on our reserve cash balances in each fund, as well as s- uh, about one point two million dollars of working cash. So we're dipping into our savings account, and we're spending out the rest of our fund balances in each of these operating accounts. So that means next year, we're going to have to, it, it, we're going, we don't have a choice. We're going to have to transfer money before we can even get our budget approved next year. I guess we can get it approved, but we're gonna have to show the transfers, and then sometime during the year, make those transfers. And the transfers are gonna come out of working cash and education, which means we're gonna have, that pot's gonna diminish. So our next steps. We have a deficit reduction plan that the administration is currently working on, that we'll present to the board based on their direction. It's my recommendation, and I believe it's our recommendation, that we have a phased plan over a couple of years. We have the cash balances to survive this and survive it pretty well, but we should take our time and do it well, and make sure we have our public along with us. That doesn't mean that people aren't gonna be upset, or that people aren't gonna come here and complain. It's gonna happen, probably. However, we're gonna give it our best shot to communicate with our community as we go through this process. Uh, we're gonna look really at our efficiency, and you know, any, everything from the lighting, uh, our energy costs, to our facilities, to all our efficiencies, and make sure that we're operating as efficiently as possible while providing the same high level of education opportunity to our kids that we currently provide. And our goal, basically, you can see the goal, and that, we are united in that goal of preserving our classroom instruction, our quality of teaching, and the awesome education that children get in Seventy Three and a Half. Observations and future risks? Are, obviously, our revenue is not keeping growth, keeping up with our expenditures. And you know from your own home banking accounts, there's only so long you can go that way, before somebody gets a second job, or you sell a car, or something. We're there. Salaries, benefits, and mandated serv- services, such as special ed-related things, we don't have a choice on. We have contracts with most of the people in our district, we don't have a choice on. Our benefits are beyond our control because the percentages that Blue Cross Blue Shield continue to charge continue to rise, beyond CPI. And we're gonna have to work through those. Those are, those are obstacles. Sustained deficits could eventually require basically cutting, heavily cutting. And if we act now, we can not only p- prevent that from happening, but also we, this is an awesome opportunity for our district. You know, every, a lot of things changed during COVID everywhere, and I've been in a few districts over the last five years since COVID, and everywhere I've gone, this has been a problem, because we were able to hire, we were able to increase programming, we were encouraged to during COVID because we're getting those extra millions from the federal government. They warned us, they told us, we're taking it away, it's not gonna be there. Many of us didn't believe them, and I'm talking educators nationwide, certainly within this state. And we're one of those districts, and now we have to recalibrate. But this is an awesome opportunity to reevaluate our delivery of instruction, our uh, how we're, and not only how we're delivering it, but who's delivering it, uh, as, from everything top to bottom, from the facilities to um, everything curriculum-related and child-related. It's an awesome opportunity to really reevaluate that, and to be once again proud of our district financially, and get back to a very strong footing financially. Just some observations, you know, most of our revenue comes from you guys, probably about eighty percent. You probably know this because you look at your tax bill, maybe more. We get a little bit from the state, and we get even less from the feds. So really, this is a burden on our taxpayers, and we're not going to come back to you asking for more tax money. That's not appropriate. I think the board's committed to that. This is about looking at what we can do internally to solve these issues. We may come back when we get this fixed for facilities, which has been our plan, but we're not gonna do, be doing this for an ed fund. Our majority of expenditures are people. Either they're purchase service, which are people, they're people, which are people, or there's some other program, which are usually people. We spend very little on supplies when you compare it to the other parts of our budget. You're not going to solve this issue by just cutting everybody's supply budget. It's gonna take some real work. Instruction and student services remain top priorities. Our structural deficit poses long-term financial risk to every aspect of the district, and we need to carefully and thoughtfully work through it. A two-to-three-year phased reduction program is currently something Dr. Kyle and the board is working on, and we hope to bring something to you in that regard in the next four or five months. Final thoughts. We want a balanced, tight budget that utilizes our current uh, amounts we get through our levy, and uses our fund balances when necessary in emergencies, but not to run our district. Our revenue reliance will continue to be on the state and feds, not much, but mostly on you guys, taxpayers. And our priorities are clear. Instruction and student services remain at the center of everything we do here, and especially our expenditures. Our challenge is to show real deficit reduction, authentic deficit reduction, and law, and taking care of some of these long-term risks before they actually harm us in some significant way. And of course, we wanna remain student-centered as we do this. I look forward, we look forward to your feedback, and appreciate the time. Thank you. If you have- If you have any questions right now, you can ask me.
Before your questions, I just want to share a couple of things, because you and I, Joe, have had, you've been here, what, three weeks? I've been here two months. This is our number-one question was, how was last year's spending? How was this year's spending? And one of the things I do want to share, because we had a, we had a finance committee last Thursday, and one of our former board members mentioned many times, we have a good fund balance. This is going to give us an opportunity, like Joe said, to write it and make sure that we're able to do that in two to three years, as opposed to other school districts that had ESER funds, that hired staff, that are not in the same boat that we're in. So I want people to know, like, although if it's the first time you're hearing it, you may be a little shocked. I've had at least four weeks on this, and I've been trying to figure out the best way to attack it, and the board and I will do that. But I just wanted to share that, because anybody who's listening, I do want people to know that because of our fund balance, that gives us the freedom to do that in a two-to-three-year window.
Thank you, and that's true. I'm a doom and gloom guy, always have been. However, the fund balances are going to be, it's been what has helped us be such an awesome school district, and it will be what saves us to remain an awesome school district. Any other questions or comments?
I was leaving it open in case anybody who was on the floor wanted to ask any questions before we jumped in, but I don't think anybody wants to jump in, so bored. Nobody from the board? It's the open meeting. It must open here. We can go ahead.
Hey, Joe.
Hello.
Hi, so I do understand that the proposed budget that we have has the structural deficit issue, as explained, and we have a shortfall, like the operating budget of about three and a half million. Could you help us understand why we don't want to just tackle and have a balanced budget without using our funds at all for this year? Why do a phased approach? Someone could argue that we should just try to be revenues equals expenses as soon as possible. Thanks.
Sure, sure. So there are, there are going to be people that are out there, maybe even in here, but probably more out there, that want to tear the Band-Aid off, get it over with, and move forward. What we, what this group, this administrative team, and these board members have to consider is our district culture and the great things this district is doing, has done, and wants to do in the future. The reason we don't want to just rip the Band-Aid off right now is because with the contracts that are in place right now, we have limited moving, mobility on that. But there are some other things in transportation, other things that we've come to take for granted that other districts may not do. And those are some of the things that I think it's going to take some time to share and to work with our board and our public to make sure everybody's on the same page prior to next year, when some of these decisions have to start being made. We could tear the Band-Aid off. We've talked about it. I can't say that I haven't said it, but Dr. Kyle is far more compassionate than I am, and I absolutely agree with him as well. And so I think we're all recommending a phased approach for that reason. So even if we were to do that, we still wouldn't get to that three and a half million. We'd make everybody unhappy, and we would have contracts we'd be paying out and not getting the service for.
Yeah, thanks. I want to hit on that. So first, we have contracts, and if we were to try to break those contracts, that besides the ethical issue, which is obvious there, we would likely have to pay them out at least. So we're very limited with options heading into the year, but with a phased approach, we could kind of turn the ship around in a more measured manner than trying to stop on a dime.
Correct. I had somebody very smart tell me recently that this is very much like a battleship or a cruise ship, or an aircraft carrier. And it, you don't turn that like you do a skiing boat or a fishing boat. It takes miles, time, to actually turn the direction of that boat, that ship. And we're kind of in that boat. We're kind of that ship, and it's going to take a couple of years to actually make the degree turn that we need to make to make this district financially healthy again.
And part of the thing I'll just stress, Matt, as I think about Skokie seventy-three and a half, part of why I applied here is because of the reputation we have. So I always look at what other school districts do, and I, in my thirty years, three decades, I've rarely seen a district nullify a contract mid-year. You know, once we started the school year, like Joe said, you keep going. But my goal, and Joe shared this, is to work with our leadership team, both union presidents, and also present a lot of what this was at all three schools next week, so everybody hears the same thing, because it's important to be transparent, but it's also important to make sure we're doing it the right way, because it's not just ESER, but there's programs that the community said, hey, these are great things we wanted to do. So the reason why I'm asking the board to give you about five months on some options is I've only been here for two months. So my goal is to work and be, the best way I could say it is surgical in what we're going to have to do, but what we're going to have to do is right-size the staff to make sure we balance that budget in three years.
I think it's also to understand for the people at home that we also have to make whatever adjustments we make comfortable to our community. So outside of just contracts that we may have for existing people, if there are services, for example, that we provide, that we may want to eventually not provide or phase out, or the cost of those programs jumps significantly, that's something that should be talked about openly, transparently, and allow people time to give the feedback that they may want to give as to where they want those services to go, or how they want those services to go. And I think that a phased approach does that. But I do think the board is in agreement, and please, board members, pipe up if you are not, that we do want to see this budget balanced within the next three years, I believe by twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And so formally on the record, we want to direct Dr. Kyle and the business office to to begin to fix this and to have a solve for it by that benchmark, but we are looking forward to seeing what the options are, starting as early as January.
Thank you. And I think the important term that you used, Madam President, is transparent. And I think we can all promise that we're going to be very transparent through this process.
I do think that it's important for the board, for those of us on the board. We've had some time to sit with this and adjust to this. So the optics may look like we don't have any comments, or we don't have any feedback, or we're not surprised by this. So I think it's important for us to acknowledge the fact that this is not the first time, or the second time, or the third time for some of us, that we've had a chance to talk about this, or to look at this. And so our silence isn't that we just think this is okay. This was very shocking and very jarring, I think, but I'm a glass-half-full person, and so I think that it's important to point out that we have some time to do things so that the impact to do what's right does not hurt as bad as it could if we didn't know about this and we let it go any further. I also think that it's important for us to acknowledge that we know we have some building issues that we want to address, and that's going to take community support and community help, and we cannot not have our house in order and ask other people to continue to have faith or to pay into a system when we still need to get our house in order. And so this is our way, and the district's showing that we realize that we have a responsibility to get things, to do our part, before we come to the community and say, we want more from you.
Hello. Oh, hi, everybody. Just so everyone can hear me. I am Emily White. I am one of your co-chairs of the Building Seventy-three and a Half project. Through listening to this budget presentation, what kept going through my mind is how much we hope people turn out for these community engagement sessions, to talk to us about what the building process can look like, that can contribute to these reductions. Outside of capital, things, if we're talking about cost of bills, if we're talking about building efficiency, if we're talking about the other ways that our facilities and aging facilities are contributing to these costs and overages, we want to hear about that, and we want to talk to you about that. So please, please, please come out. October sixteenth is our next community engagement session, and we hope we'll see you all there.
Thanks, Emily, and one thing I'll just share, oh, sorry, Board Member Chan.
No, I just wanted to, thank you. I'm not sure if Kelly clarified this, but she directed the balanced budget in three years. That's without fund balances? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Without depleting our fund balance. And I will say, because to speak to Matt's point, there will be people that think we have thirty-four million dollars, we can take hits here and there. But a healthy school district is a healthy school district with a healthy fund balance, and it's not a bank account we want to keep going into, and so we want to minimize impact to our fund balances as much as possible.
Excellent. Like, this presentation, I've had three weeks to wrap my mind around it, but Kelly is right that when the board hired me, the number-one goal they set for me is fiscal responsibility. That was number one of the six goals. So I knew that this was coming. This isn't kind of what I wanted to do in my second month on the job, but it's what needs to be done, and this is like, Joe just kind of told you the what, and I'll just kind of beat to the why. So again, like we said, we had a situation where we had a pandemic, really only happens every hundred years in the United States. So we got some funds that we were able to staff accordingly when kids came back. And right now, between, we looked at the 2019, 2020 school year of what the staffing was, and we compare it to what we have going into this year, which is twenty-five, twenty-six, and we're up forty-nine point four-three FTEs. So when you think about that, that's adding staff because we came out of COVID. That's adding staff during a time where, you know, it was pandemic. And this doesn't mean that we're overstaffed by forty-nine point four-three FTEs, but what it does mean is that this is kind of the why. Like, you got the what, you got the why. And then what I'm asking the board is give me about five months in January to come back to the board and say, here's option one, here's option two, here's option three. And the reason why I need five months, because some people will say, just do it tomorrow, Charlie, I need to learn more about this community, and I need to meet with people, talk with people, and find inefficiencies, find ways we could work smarter, not harder. And the whole focus of what we're going to do is really to protect that classroom experience of the kid. So we're kind of working from the outside in when we do this. But this is really the why, and the how. I've already started working on it in my head, but now I'm going to be bringing my team of administrators, updating the board, working with union presidents, going to each building to make sure that they're aware how it's going. I did, unfortunately, have to live through the oh-seven, oh-eight financial crisis, and we're not unlike hundreds of other districts in Illinois that didn't lower the staffing after ESER funds left. So the good news, I'm always optimistic, too, is that we do have a healthy fund balance that gives us two to three years to right the ship. So I just wanted to give you the what and the how, or the what and the why. The how is coming later.
Comments from the board?
Just on the note of acknowledgements, too, that this situation, for the sake of calling, is something that Dr. Kyle, Joe, and even Karen honestly inherited and were not responsible for. So all of you putting your heads together to put together a three-year phased approach, which also doesn't disrupt our standing with the state from a financial report card standpoint, is something I wanted to acknowledge and commend you all for as well.
I think it's also important to give people at home some ideas of the kinds of things that were added as a result of COVID, the kind of impacts that schools saw for, you know, when you talk about student learning loss. For example, schools were encouraged, like the federal money was given, and it was encouraged to add things like additional support personnel, specialized services, reading specialists, math specialists, things of that sort, smaller class sizes, one-on-one additions to people working with students, all things that people celebrate and want in school districts. And when someone's giving you millions of dollars to add these in double and sometimes triplicate, it's a no-brainer. But when we don't have the revenue side of things that can kind of keep up with the additions, now we find ourselves two years away from that ESER fund money, and now we're beginning to see the long-term structural impact it's having on our district. We have to begin to have some difficult conversations. And I just think I want to say, this board is centered around the student experience and what's best for students and families in this district. And so we are definitely looking at those things that are going to have the least impact on students and services, and I want people to feel heartened in that.
I also just want to point out that as much as we're expressing things in the grave sense, thanks to Joe, I like the doom and gloom. I'm good with that. I like to. But, but we are blessed that we do have a good fund balance. And I definitely do not want us to try to stop an aircraft carrier on a dime and risk tipping it over. And I think that as a district, it's responsible for us to try to give the administrators the adequate time to come up with the how. So having several, you know, several months, five months, to come up with a plan, giving a couple of years to achieve the balanced budget without use of fund balance, as much as I would love to just see expenses cut that need to be cut, revenue growth, because that's how I think, I'm definitely deferring and supportive of the administrators here and everyone on this team who want to continue to improve the quality of the education in this school district. And we're, as a board, but also those of us on the stage and those who come to these meetings, want the district to be fully aware, to be fully informed of this, and know that we're taking it very seriously. So if there are, like, thoughts and opinions, we encourage you to come out and speak those opinions in public comment, or to email the board. We see those emails. And just know that we're taking it very seriously, and I'm sure Dr. Kyle would also appreciate hearing if you wanted to reach out to him, too, about anything in the district as he's coming into this role.
I just want to kind of piggyback on that. I know there are going to be a lot of things said out in the community, and that doesn't help. If you want to be a part of the solution, I think that it is going to have to be me coming to programs that are going to work towards fixing this problem. And if you don't have your voice heard, you can't really, you can't really say anything, so.
But I think it's also a great time for our community to hear this conversation and also think about that revenue side of things and where we get our money from. You know, right now, it's a really heavy burden on our tax base, on our homeowners, and so opportunities to partner with the larger village to maybe find some ways to target some more revenue sources in our area could be helpful in some of those places, and that's a community effort. That's just not a school district effort. So, you know, if we have communities, community members out there that can help in those arenas, this could also help some programming and services things within our district. That's all. I need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Second.
Moved by Member Dr. Nelson, seconded by Member Almawala.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I need a motion to reconvene the regular open meeting.
So moved.
Commotion to reconvene the regular open meeting.
Second.
Moved by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Chan. We now move on to Section Seven of our agenda, and that is class size. I feel like we're missing something on our, but yes, we're moving on to class size update.
Thanks, Kelly. Last month, I think a board member asked why. Thanks, Kelly. Last month, I think a board member asked why at seventh grade do we have such low numbers at eight and eleven in a class size? That's actually the advisory number, so that's how small an advisory class is. But the biggest thing that, when we look at class size, we're on the lower end of most levels, so to the high. But at kindergarten, that's probably the lowest one right now. As a board, we're probably about thirty students short at kindergarten from last year to this year. But other than that, nothing much has changed since last month.
Any comments? All right, moving on to Item B, the superintendent's update.
I think the board said it pretty well with, it takes a village to start a school year. And I jumped in in July first, and I can't thank enough of the teachers, the support staff, the custodial, the administration, the board and their support, parents for everything they've done. I really feel like no news is good news when you start a school year. So Kelly, you and I are the same with that. And other than some compliments of the back-to-school bash, people really liked that. I just wanted to thank everybody, parents, school board members, administrators, students, staff and faculty. I will share one funny story. We share, we share the hallway with McCracken, so I'll get in the hallway sometimes. Two kids walk by and I said hello, and they kind of said hello and mumbled. And then one of them's like, who's that guy? And the other guy's like, the superintendent. And I said, I am the superintendent. And they were really excited to meet me. And I was like, wow, these are good kids in Skokie. So they're excited to meet me, so I'm getting a chance to get out and see some of the kids. And then I would just share with the board, I owe each board member a handwritten note, but I want to show this to the audience, seventy-three point five. Our theme this year is Together for Tomorrow. And it's really important, especially in the news we just heard with the budget, that we work together for a better tomorrow for all of our students, staff, parents, and community members. So just wanted to share that theme with everybody, staying with just opportunities for me to meet people. Tomorrow night, it's Meet Superintendent event. I picked a really great title for that, and that's at seven o'clock, and that'll be at Meyer. And my goal is to meet as many people as I can. I think as of right now, I've met with about sixty-two people in the community, and I want to continue to meet and learn more. And then Session Number Three, Emily shared this, but I'll share it again. Building Seventy Three Point Five is on October sixteenth at seven PM at Middleton School. And this is an opportunity for the community to learn about what the architecture's plans for the new Middleton and then paths moving forward, and then getting feedback from the community hopefully by this November, so we have some clear direction of where we're going. So we have two opportunities for people to come out. The next one is October sixteenth. We look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you. Any questions about the superintendent's report?
I do want to add on that I had the opportunity to come to the opening days of the school year, and everyone just looked so happy, Dr. Kyle. And I just want to say, it was a great start to the school year. I think the back-to-school bash, along with the breakfast, the food looked amazing, people looked recharged. I thought it was a great start to the school year.
Do you think it was the Welcome Back Cotter music?
I think that was it. I think that that, you know, that set the tone, yes.
Three-quarters of the teachers probably don't even know what that show is.
Okay, moving on to Item C, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Update. Anything you want to tell us, Kevin?
I, so you saw my report. I would like to reiterate my gratitude to the board for supporting our adoption of collaborative literacy. Had a great summer of professional learning, had about forty-seven teachers from across grade levels and disciplines participate in that professional learning, which has led to a really strong launch to the program. And we have a schedule of professional learning throughout the rest of the year that comes with our purchase of the program. And as I noted in my report, our instructional coaches will be playing an essential role in providing the kind of PL that the publisher just can't, right, the on-the-ground, direct support to individual teachers and teams. So things are looking very good right now. The rest of it is in my report, and I'm wondering if you have any curiosities that you would like a little more information about.
I have something really quick. So I'm just, I know it's very early, it's just adopted. But so, can you explain for me, but probably for others, just the steps now that they're in the adoption phase of the new curriculum? Like, what, what do you, when you're looking at the school year, like, what, what happens next? Is it a few, it takes a few years, right, for it to kind of like matriculate, for the teachers to become, if you don't mind educating?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question, and I can understand why others would be thinking the same thing. So what we're looking for in Year One of implementation is for teachers and students to become confident with the habits, the routines of the program. So that's what we told our teachers, we want their number one focus to be on, is to become comfortable and proficient with the program. So even for the teachers who piloted it, this is still a challenge for them, right? Because we have yet to experience the trappings of unit by unit across the whole year. So that's what our professional learning is designed to address, is to maximize their proficiency with the routines of the program. And of course, we're looking at our metrics, right? We, we adopted the program so that we could continue to see strong student outcomes, and we're going to continue looking at those.
Yeah, thank you.
I just wanted to throw it out there, just to keep in mind as you update us throughout the year on the curriculum, I would love to hear feedback from the educators and teachers on what they think is working well, maybe where it falls short, is the curriculum, like, culturally inclusive, you know, for all of our students?
Yeah, thank you. We are going to be gathering staff and student feedback throughout the year, and happy to report on that.
Thank you. And again, for those of you at home, if you want to see Kevin's report or Mr. Podeska's report, it is located on Board Docs under Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Update. Moving on to Item D, Financial Update.
Yes, you'll see in your board packet that you have the, the statement, goodness gracious. It's been a couple months since I've been here, everybody. Statement of Position, which is the audited July from the treasurer's office. So I will get better, I'll get back in the hang of this again, everybody, I promise.
It's okay. Thank you, and welcome back. It's good to see you. Again, that report's located in Board Docs. We have standing agenda item number, Item E, which is District Space Needs. Does anybody have any comments? I'm going to actually maybe suggest that this can be removed from future agendas, just because we are well aware of district space needs and are actively working on it. So any conversation related to it would probably come up under Build Seventy Three and a Half. So I think we can remove this from the agenda.
We can do that.
All right, Item F, Future and Possible Agenda Items or Other Discussion Items? One thing I do want to address is that we did not have a space under correspondence for this meeting. And so I do want to acknowledge at this time that we received correspondence yesterday from the District Seventy Three and a Half Caregivers Group. That information has been received. The broad content of that correspondence was in regards to providing the board with an update of current parental issues and or grievances related to student services and the ongoing process going toward, working towards that. Future information will be provided to that caregivers' group going forward, but we do want to acknowledge that we have received it. Okay, moving on to Section Eight of the Agenda, Committee Reports. Item A, NTDSE.
Hello there. Okay, so we had our governance meeting August twenty-seventh. It really focused on, you know, what they were doing leading up to the first day of school. A lot of it was spent on professional development and training. Their first day of school, I believe they had three hundred and thirty-two kids to start, kind of spread out, you know, at Malloy and the Satellite classrooms. September numbers will be more accurate, because I think there were a couple of schools that had not started yet. As I mentioned in the last meeting, about forty-eight kids are ours. Space continues to be an ongoing issue for them. They have some construction going on now. I think they're handling it really well. Some of the other member districts did offer space for their ancillary staff. They consolidated some offices to create additional classrooms. So they're managing the space issue. And then we got a first read of the budget. I believe we'll get the final one at the meeting this month, which is the third Wednesday, I believe. And then the administrative reports, I uploaded that, or I hit America to Board Docs.
Thank you. Any questions for Member Chan? All right, moving on to Section B, the Finance Committee.
I'll keep it super brief. It was exactly the presentation we had in our open meeting, public meeting.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Section Nine, Old Business. We are moving to Policies for Adoption. Member Wolfinger is not here. She leads the Policy Committee. Do we have someone else from the Policy Committee that wants to speak to these?
I don't think I have anything particular. A lot of these, I think, we have the Policy Committee each week, but I, or every, every quarter. And yeah, Vicki does a fantastic job normally talking through this, but I'm going to attempt to. If you're looking on Board Docs, you'll see all of the various policies. One is, one item is the like summary of the various policies that were reviewed, and the other is highlighted based on changes. So you're welcome to take a look. But there really weren't any, there weren't any meaningful or impactful ones, I'd say, for a particular district, but more wording to be inclusive. And there was one particular one about AI that was interesting in the discussion. I'd otherwise recommend moving forward with them.
Yeah, and I think it's important for us as a board and as a school system, just to kind of keep our eyes out on these policies that, related to AI as they are coming up, because I just think we're going to see so much stuff in the coming years with it. So it was interesting to see that one. I need a motion to adopt the policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
I need a second. Moved by Member Glebe, seconded by Member Dr. Nelson.
Roll call, Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to Item Ten, which is, which is New Business. I need a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Fiscal Year Twenty-Six Budget.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Six Budget.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just think I want to reiterate for those who are watching and may be concerned they could be tuning in late, we on this board are very aware that we have a structural deficit issue. We think we have a great team that's in place, and we want to give them the time and ability to tackle this the best way to protect the school's reputation and performance, exceptional performance. And so us approving this budget in tandem with a request that we achieve a balanced budget without tapping into our funds for the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year, we believe that is the best course of action. And we understand that there be, there may be members in our community who are concerned, and we believe that this is a good use of our fund balance in order to ensure that we're still maintaining a high, exceptionally high performance in this district. And I definitely support moving forward with this budget as proposed.
Thank you.
I need a roll call. Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to Item B, I need a motion to approve the overnight field trips funding model for School Year Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the overnight field trips funding model for School Year Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six as presented.
Second.
Moved by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Dr. Nelson. Does anybody have any questions about the outdoor field trips?
I was just going to check. The, the big thing I noticed is the, the increase this year over prior years. I know this is, I didn't have the opportunity to really investigate this a lot myself, so I don't want to cause duress, but could you just speak to what that is? Thank you.
No problem. So what I did is, the funding model in the past that we looked at is, we took into account the staff stipends, how much it would cost us for substitutes, transportation costs, accommodation costs, and supplies. And so there are those different sections that we look at for each outdoor field trip. In the past, the funding model has included the district covering our staff stipends, our substitutes, and the transportation. And then this year, I took transportation out of that funding model, so that the district would be paying for the staffing side of things, and not the, the transportation, the accommodations, and the materials and supplies that would be needed for it. And so that's the increase that you're seeing this year. To give you an idea, if the trip itself, to give it for White Pines, let's say, if all costs were included in the cost, the cost would be about three hundred and sixty-two dollars a student. And if we did the funding model as we did last year for White Pines, it would be approximately two hundred dollars. And what I am proposing is, sorry, I have to get to the right line on here, approximately two sixty-six. So I was trying, based on past conversations we've all had, I was trying to find a middle ground this year of a little bit more fiscally responsible, and what the district is deciding to carry there, and, but also kind of moving us forward a little bit.
Recognizing it would not be cost prohibitive for people who have financial needs.
Right. So if you look at the attached sheet, you'll see in that bottom kind of blue section where I have it, one of the things that I take into account for the district's cost is a percentage for fee waivers. And so, for example, with White Pines, the budgeted cost of staff and subs is about seventy-eight, seventy-eight hundred, with another thirty-four hundred for fee waivers that the district would be carrying. So total district cost there would be about eleven thousand, when you add those two things together. So we're looking, in general, kind of estimating for the two trips, where district costs that you would be carrying with staff and subs would be about twenty-two to twenty-four thousand dollars.
Question for the public. For students who receive a fee waiver, does the district carry that cost, or is that cost covered by some external grant or funding?
That is covered by the district. We do not have external grants or funding for that.
And the estimate per, the, the estimated student cost, is that the, is that the dollar cost, like, per student, like, family, what the family would pay?
That is per student. So if you had two students going, then it would be double that.
Okay, I just, that's what they, that's what the, our students pay versus, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I, I mean, I think it's a very reasonable cost for the rest of the district to help subsidize this, and it's, it sounds like it's a really fun thing. It's a bummer board members can't just like come. So, you know, thank you for explaining that.
I am going to White Pines. They invited me, so I'm going on a Friday.
Nice. Enjoy yourself. See you in the showers.
Were there any?
They're amazing.
Were there any other questions related to this? I do want to say that what you're approving tonight is this funding model. What we will do is, as McCracken and Middleton are able to give me more specifics on supplies that they've bought, and when they lock down their busing and things, that's when we'll create the actual amount. So the amounts you're seeing per student may change. What we're approving is the fund, how we're going to fund it.
As noted in the model.
Yes.
Thank you. America?
Roll call, Member Amawala.
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yes, we're going to move to Item C, the Approved the Cardiac Emergency Response Plans. Dr. Kyle's going to give us some insight on it.
Yeah, just a little background on that. The state mandated that all school districts should have a cardiac emergency response plan. So I think that kind of went into effect in January of twenty-twenty-five. So this summer, I met with all the nurses, and they put together a really good plan. That, and just to summarize, what it means is that each building will show the staff what to do if there's a cardiac emergency, and where the AED, is that, am I right with that, AED, where they're at in the building. And this- And this is a team that you only want to have them meet once because you're only going to meet a second time if it actually happens. So that's what we're going to be doing, implementing this plan. This is just a model of a plan that will hit all the things the state told us we needed to do with this.
Can I ask that we have somewhere in the district office, all of the people who are certified to administer CPR, so we know on hand. And just for full transparency, I'm asking this because I have worked in an environment where a student needed some cardio, I mean, some cardiac intervention, some CPR, and it was provided, there were people on hand, the student would have died if not. But in the aftermath, as a staff, we realized that we had no idea in the building who could and who couldn't. And so I would rather be proactive here than to live through what I lived through in another place.
Absolutely, we could include that.
I would suggest that everyone becomes certified to provide CPR, but that's just me.
Yes, Dr. Nelson. I need a motion to approve the cardiac emergency response plan.
What, I think there was a discussion?
No.
It was a discussion. I just wanted to say that one of the things that we've done in the past years is we have one of our nurses who's now trained as a CPR instructor so that we can do this for as many staff as possible. And so we are working on that, Dr. Nelson.
Now, I need a motion to approve the cardiac emergency response plan?
I move that we approve the cardiac emergency response plan as written.
Second.
Moved by member Dr. Nelson, seconded by member Amawala.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Motion to approve the BOE protocols?
So moved.
Discussion?
So I want to, maybe, could I just ask Kelly, sorry, President Nelson, would you be able to share, what is this document? Why is this, why is this here?
Yes, member Glebe, I'll be happy to share what this document is all about. So what everyone is seeing is the new board protocols for how the board of seven will govern themselves now that we have a new board of seven. This is a document that is recommended on behalf of the IS, the IASB that all boards do at the start of their year or the start of their board service together. And it is, you know, essentially a collection of agreements on how we will work cooperatively as a board to do the job that we've been hired to do. Someone should expect to see a document similar to this, probably every two years, sometimes every four years, it depends on the makeup of the board. But as half of our board flipped, we met with our IASB representative in August. We reviewed our old agreements, which were last adopted in twenty-twenty, and now we have now adopted our new agreements for this board of seven.
Yeah, and stuff on here, for those who haven't had that chance to look, are just, these are all items that we on the board have discussed and all agreed to. And it's mostly how we function. For example, the board, it, we, we will not always agree here on this board about direction taken, but we will support the decision of the board and we agree to communicate, you know, transparently communicate with one another and in these meetings and vote based on those like opinions on how things should go. And then we will do so respectfully. We have Robert's Rules, things like that to help keep order, but that's the purpose of this. And when we talk to members of the community, we will do so in a respectful manner in regards to our fellow board members and in regards to the district. We're not going to slander the district. So if you're wondering, does this mean that board members can't speak to opportunities that the district has to improve or strengths of the district? It's that the, it's that board members do have that ability to point out opportunities for the district to improve, but we also are ambassadors of the district. And that's why also if you're a community member and you have an issue and something you want resolved, we encourage you to reach out to the, your principal and the superintendent first or make a public comment.
Sounds great.
There was a technology question. Board member Chan, would you like to ask Richard that technology question that you sent me earlier in the week?
Um, it's me again. I, I noticed in the accounts payables report that there was payables for one hundred and twenty Chromebooks. Yeah, it's a Chromebook question. Could you tell me, because we approved the disposable of ninety, disposal of ninety-two last month, and so I just was wondering why we ordered more than we got rid of?
Sure. Um, so when we place orders, that's based off of our useful life metrics. As we're decommissioning, that can happen in stages, especially during the summer. If we're doing refresh initiatives, I have scars from the pandemic when sanctions and US Customs came in to stop a lot of stuff coming across the ocean. And we've seen a lot of other impacts that keep those trends coming back. So I always play it a little safe and make sure that we don't decommission all of our fleet that's going to be retired at once. We do that big haul in the summer just to get the space cleared. And then we usually do another one in winter break, but we may do one another before then just because of the, the phone upgrade has left us with a lot of equipment to, to offset. So there'll be more that we're going to be decommissioning over the year.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I may have gone out of order, I don't think you voted on the board protocols, so I apologize about that.
I need a motion to approve the board protocols?
I'll make a motion to approve the board protocols.
Second.
Moved by member Amawala, seconded by member Dr. Nelson.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
We will now move on to item E, the approval of the consent agenda. A reminder that we do not discuss the consent agenda.
I make a move, motion to approve the consent agenda stream.
Second.
Moved by member Dr. Nelson, seconded by member Chan, right? Or was it Jacobs, by member Jacobs?
Roll call, member Amawala, member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we have the floor open for public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will move to item thirteen, which is a calendar review.
Just acknowledge the one that we got, sorry, about the caregivers.
I did that.
Sorry, man.
Um, moving on to calendar review. Tomorrow, come out, we have an exciting night. It is meet the superintendent, Dr. Charles Kyle. We will be at Meyer, it says Meyer on here, but I think you said Middleton.
It's Meyer.
It's Meyer. It's at Meyer at seven PM. He will be here to meet all of you. Come out, come out, come out. On September eleventh, is it eleventh or eighteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. No, not governance, the, um, build seventy-three and a half meeting, it's not on my paper.
Sixteenth.
Oh, okay. On October sixteenth, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna put that in later. Let me try this again. On September seventeenth, going in order of the month, we have our board's governance meeting. Unfortunately, you cannot come, that is closed session, but it will be a heck of a good time. We will be meeting in closed session here. And then on October fourteenth, we will have our regularly scheduled board meeting, come out, one and all. And then on October seventeenth, sixteenth, we would like everyone in the community far and wide to come out and enter in a dialogue with us with build seventy-three and a half. It will be at Middleton at?
Seven o'clock.
At seven o'clock. Pack the house. And at this time, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Moved by member Dr. Nelson, seconded by member Chan.
Roll call, member Amawala, member Kelly Nelson.
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson, member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And member Chan.
Yes.
Motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.